Okay, let's call it back to order.
Go ahead, sir.
Go ahead. Uh, this is informal, so, uh, please stop and we're not bringing something up. Stop an actual question if you like. Uh, just pop background a little bit, uh, a bit different than half. Uh, we're architects that, uh, done a tremendous amount of, uh, recreation and aquatic planning over a period of years and therefore, uh, to have a holistic view and a realistic view for our cities, uh, we've more and more teamed with groups like half to, to look at the overall needs of it and be able to better. We talked about locations before in terms of, uh, was this my thought? These you can see probably a little better in terms of where things are. Uh, you have the recreation center and you have the two aquatic centers, then you have the senior center for a park. Uh, obviously all fairly within the residential component, uh, but they're still, uh, it's still not necessarily right, right within all the areas of the city. Uh, but that's kind of where you're at now in terms of your facilities. We looked at all your facilities and just, just a brief overview of what you got. You probably know, but sometimes you had to just kind of review what you had. Uh, you have two recreation centers. Uh, on the left is Memorial Park Center, uh, on the right is Fred Herring Center. Uh, together you have about forty-eight thousand square feet within those two centers. Uh, Memorial Park, uh, is about eighteen thousand square feet, built in nineteen ninety-nine. Uh, then you have a gymnasium, you have a fitness room, I guess classrooms, a game room, vending area. One of the things that, uh, that strikes us with this facility is, uh, uh, the, the gymnasium obviously takes off, takes up a large part of that eighteen thousand square feet. In the remaining areas that you have, the size of those are just, are, are, I guess, probably challenging for staff to have a meaningful size, uh, programming activities within those rooms. So, uh, perhaps utilization of that is not as, is not as good as it could be if they were looking larger size and there are reasons why things are built in certain sizes, but as consultant today, I'm just kind of telling you what my impressions are for the trends in the industry are. Those rooms are probably a little bit undersized to really fully function for a lot of people. Uh, and therefore, I think probably the utilization you have with that center is probably not as great as you could. Uh, proximity to the road also, if you're all of y'all here nearby, it's really kind of, really kind of hits back off the road a little bit in terms of where it is, so it doesn't have a real high presence, uh, for people going by, by the center itself. A, a great center in terms of, you know, what it is. Uh, Herring Center, uh, y'all probably all been to that at some point in time in your, in your life. Uh, you have two gymnasiums or racquetball courts. Uh, it was built in eighty-three and in addition, I guess, we've done it eighty-eight. So, that doesn't seem that long ago to me in my age, but when you start thinking about it, that's a few years ago. Uh, it has racquetball courts, uh, fitness room, uh, classrooms, game room, vending concessions. Centers are truly well maintained. Now, I would say that on all the facilities you got, uh, I don't know, I guess maybe Bob, if, if people are responsible, but you did a great job of maintaining the facilities you got, really are. This center itself, if you, you think about some of the programs that you had in eighty-eight, where we all were in our life in eighty-eight, programs are offered in two thousand twelve. Centers change. Centers needs change, uh, space allocation, programs change. Who heard of Pilates? Who heard of Zumba? Who heard of all these things that we're doing in our centers today? And that's true as you go forward as well. So, this center probably has things that you could improve, improve the use of it. One is expanded cardio area. There's, there's so much interest, we saw the, saw the chart, that the interest of, in, in this exercise and wellness aspect of it. So, you know, this center could probably be modified to expand that area. The staff area here is really, really limited. Again, it's probably a product of when it was designed, but right now you have the director of the center, extremely tight quarters. How you monitor people coming into that center, the, 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 uh, control point, you have to walk a long way into the center before you actually see a person. Just there's some things, and none of this is meant to be critical, it's just, it's just kind of a proactive, uh, rejuvenation kind of piece that you could do to that center. Uh, the rest of the shared areas, a lot of those have some ADA and capacity issues probably right now that, uh, could be done. So, those are some things that we see on that center that probably could enhance that use of that facility. Uh, the senior activity center is ten thousand square feet, you know, heavily used center. I'm sure y'all have all this at the center as well. You've got a kitchen, a game room, a classroom that's, uh, and library reading area is kind of to the end, uh, and a large multipurpose room, which is, you know, really, really well used. Chair taken up and down, partition taken across, it's really well used facility. Uh, and it's so well used to the point that you've seen that growing. And that's what happens, you talk about parking, you know? You know, and, and you are getting some Asian population, but what's happening is, is that programs that are being offered there are probably right on target with an expanded Asian group. And I could talk all morning about the seniors. What do we do to seniors? Seniors are, let's say fifty-five to ninety now. I mean, we're talking two generations, you know, maybe three generations almost. So, uh, I'll talk just, let me talk just a second about seniors. What's happening in the industry is, is, is seniors, uh, is not the, uh, it's not necessarily the age, but it's the physical capabilities of people that kind of separate, uh, maybe uses as we're going to see in the future. Because we have, we have, you know, people seventy-five years old that are going to recreation centers and, and working out and walking on elevated tracks and doing all that stuff, especially the water piece of it, the water, indoor water piece, it probably might as well support it because seniors like it too. Just, you know, that we found that it's a great activity for seniors to do and they can exercise and be somewhat buoyant, it's easier on the joints, the rehab side of the equation, the medical side of the equation of indoor aquatics is great as well, and the play aspect of indoor aquatics. So, that's why you're getting a lot of support for indoor aquatics. But the senior component is one that some people are creating zones within a recreation center that would encourage seniors that are really young seniors to move into those areas, and I'm one of those young seniors, uh, to move into those centers. And then senior center is probably for, for, or maybe a little older senior population, even though somebody is fifty-five, probably can go to that senior in fifty-five or fifty?
Eighty.
Fifty, fifty. Uh, can go into those centers. But, uh...
You've got a lot of crowds around here.
I've got a decade to go.
We've got a lot of neighbors here, uh, but...
Maybe you head to the table here.
I think, I think you get the gist of what I'm saying, you know? Uh, there was a study done that, that, uh, the people at sixty-five thought they were actually thirteen years younger. I mean, this was a study done by National Aging Society. And, and that's what's happened today with seniors, you know, that need to be ratcheted up. So, bottom line, this is a huge population. And what do we do? And, you know, your, your, your senior activity center is a product of its, of its own success. And that, and the product is, is that you're, you're overcrowded there. Uh, you know, they need an exercise gym space, there's one they can go to next door, but it, you know, it's, it's not a real large area. They definitely have a big need for classrooms, an expanded kitchen area, but the kitchen area is extremely well used and it's pretty typical in senior center. So, that's kind of where it is. It's not a negative source, a positive story. It's so well used and so well managed that we got growing. Public meeting facilities, uh, we looked at two, one the Hendrick House and the other is the Stevens Community Room. Uh, the Hendrick House is a, is a great little jewel of mine if you for yet, I think. As an architect, I appreciate it, and I'm sure y'all do too. You know, it's just a unique venue and, and I understand it stays booked, really, really well booked. So, it just needs a little help in terms of maybe bringing some things into it to help it a little bit, maybe, uh, maybe enhance the wedding area that you have in the back a little bit and refresh that some. Uh, you know, the kitchen probably could be updated a little bit to help it, uh, be more responsive to some catering things that are occurring within that center. Uh, but, uh, I think the way you're maintaining it and the purity of it and all that is great. Uh, so it just needs a little help and we just got a little money in there to help, help, uh, create a few of those changes there to make that a better use.
Are there any ADA issues there?
What, what do you mean? Which one, which?
Uh... I think some of them actually have been addressed and then, uh...
We're okay at the, at the Hendrick House.
Yeah. So, we're in address over.
It's well kept, but stated, and I didn't know if there were issues.
We have a parking issue, but we just fixed it.
It's been great.
We just fixed it.
Yeah. Stevens Community Room, uh, you know, it's got serving kitchen, large hall. If, uh, you know, if you wanted to, uh, and y'all, and y'all probably know more about the use of this and me coming in and looking at it, but it's, it's self-contained within the building itself. And if you could somehow not make it self-contained so you could use it other hours and, and dedicated use for that and maybe the toilets aren't shared, I mean, you know, if you're having a meeting, you can go into the toilet facility instead of going down the hall and sharing the toilets, libraries, stuff like that. A few things like that that you could do to improve, uh, improve perhaps, uh, the desire for people to use it in terms of, right now it's, and, uh, so that's kind of my take on it. You can't put windows in it. If we could put windows in it, that'd be great, but we can't. Windows help kind of long meetings like this.
They serve dedicated toilets during the eight, five hours or what?
I'm talking about dedicated toilets. Let's say there's, some of the meetings that you could be having might be evening meetings, let's say. So, uh, it would not only serve the eight, five, but it would also serve the evening meetings so that, uh, you created a kind of standalone piece instead of, as a part of, as part of that center that you've got there now.
Isn't that, isn't that a happy thought because the rest of the building should serve?
What we have is, it's been a while since Wayne's been over there. Um, since, since we started this process back in on that.
Okay.
But we have to open up the lobby area to access the community room. I think what he, what he's really trying to address is for after-hours, if we could check the key out, somebody that just had access to come into that space only without opening up the lobby area, which we have issues from time to time with other people having access coming through the lobby or hanging out in the lobby without staff there to monitor it. And the people that rent the room, they don't monitor it because they're in the, in the community room. If it had its own outside entrance, I don't know how we would address the restroom issue, but as far as having its own entrance would be...
If you partitioned the lobby area somehow to second...
That's a, that's a possibility. I'm, I'm just addressing that, and I'm sorry I didn't articulate it well, Bob, but that's really what I'm talking about, is you could get more use out of it if you could, if you could do some of those improvements to make it accessible in the evening, which would mean you probably want some dedicated toilets for that, so you just, you're self-contained within its own.
Wait a second. Even the, where the restrooms are, you know, you got that open wedding room, aren't all those doors locked anymore?
Well, they can get into the big lobby area when it's running out after hours and we have a lot of people coming in and out. And, and I think that's the, the thought behind this is there's, there's not staff or anybody there to monitor after-hours what happens there in the lobby or the rest of the building if the door had to be open. And, and if somebody leaves early, the, the doors are programmed on the system to the time that the party says they're going to be there. So, if they said they're going to be there from, from six to eleven o'clock at night, but yet they don't come in until seven and they leave at nine, those doors are still open from six to eleven coming into the lobby with, without staff or anybody there to monitor it. So, the, the thought behind this is if there was a way to have its own separate entrance, we could have a key checked out just like we do the Hendrick House where people are responsible for the entire facility while they're there. Um, it's a wish list, it may not be possible to, to do this.
Well, I mean, I don't have a problem with that, I'm just kind of wondering what the issues were. Have we any problems?
We have problems, people leave early and other people come in from time to time. We have, um, it, it's not every day, no.
I was just wondering.
But, but from time to time.
Partitioning where those restrooms are so they could go into the lobby.
Or we, or we figure out a different access control.
People coming into the stadium, I don't think.
Not, not that I'm aware with, with that, but there's a lapse in the, there's a lapse in the security when somebody is totally in the room, they're not watching the lobby, or if they leave early and it's still open and, and there's kind of a lapse, but, and there are...
Especially I like the idea of more steering, you know, I was just wondering if we had any issues.
This, this would keep you from having an issue from it. Uh, and again, the spirit of this is just to say, how can we better utilize what you've got for one, because, uh, you, you are one of the things.
Just one, one more comment on the reason I said maybe partition the lobby, you know, second partition of the lobby for access to other areas. There's also an issue about noise created in that room, you know, with events, I know I've run into that. I put together stuff that's used at community room and say, oh, you know, you can't have noise but a certain level, you gotta have noise, you know, can't have noise after a certain time so forth. And Hendrick House, I mean, you get the same problem, but it's a different issue, it's a residential area. But there, if there were an additional partition in the lobby that would help block that sound, then that would make it a little more compatible for some of the events that people want to hold in that space and give you the security and give them access to the restrooms without, you know, taking away, uh, without having to do anything else for the restrooms. I just think that's the ideal solution.
I should allow me to add the doors. Looks like a closet, does that...
Okay. Uh, the, the aquatic facilities, uh, those are all great ideas, uh, in the depth of time, kind of go through this, we might come back. Uh, two facilities you have are Sun Valley and Old Town Recreation Center. Sun Valley opened in two thousand and five, uh, you know, you have the competition pool of twenty-five yard leisure amenities, you actually have kind of a spray element here, Lacy River. The things we're saying that could be, uh, could be improved here is, uh, is, uh, increase some of the shade structures that you have, uh, on the deck. It's, it's a large, you have some kind of large open areas and this, this area right here is a, just a really large zone. Uh, you know, create a concession area that would allow people to stay there, it wouldn't be a big expense to allow people to stay there a little bit longer. It makes it more attractive for people to use the park a little bit longer, shade structure as well. You could do some additional spray elements as part of this, create inexpensively to increase the capacity of the park. But those are some observations that we would have in terms of kind of minimal, not, not trying to redo, but just how do you add to it? And, uh, we have kind of the same comments here except on the Old Town, it's obviously a smaller center, it was a redo, uh, kind of an area you had before. Uh, the observation we have here is shade structures again. Uh, we've got a lot of water parks, uh, and you can't build enough shade structures today because people really seek those out. Our filter room, uh, small things, filter room needs to be secured, uh, storage area for off-season storage, you know, all those things for you to store. We just, right now, the staff are just really challenged to be able to store those. Uh, if you want to add some amenities, uh, perhaps, uh, a twenty-five yard lap pool, one that's kind of open water, you could swim laps, but it could be open water. Uh, maybe you have an additional amenity like the current channel or something, current channel where you can walk against the water for water walking for seniors in the morning and that type of thing, just play on the, when the park is open for you by the evening, afternoon. Uh, those are just some things that could be done to improve the capacity and use of the park. This is summary of what you've got. And you notice here the thing that's most recent is, is seven years and seven grubs in the, in the building, it's older than this, but I guess it was renovated, but it's used nine years ago. Uh, but you can see Fred Herring is close to twenty-nine years old. We don't realize that, but, till we start looking at it that way. So, there's a reason for some of those things, the reason for some of those things needing to occur and even, well, it surprised me, the senior activity center is fifteen years old, just looking at that and saying, wow, just looking at it, you wouldn't think that. Uh, but it's, it is a reality of what's gone on and of course Louisville's growing. Uh, so, I go back to general impressions, maintenance facility is excellent. Aquatics would, uh, benefit from additional shade and, and, and to increase that use. Public meeting spaces appear to be a great benefit, there's just a few things that we're saying might be done to improve that. And what we did, we benchmarked Louisville against, uh, other cities in the metroplex because we assume that the quality of life you're trying to provide and the competitive advantage of having quality of life is something you would like to know what other cities around here are doing. NRPA has the standard, but it's somewhat outdated and it's not really appropriate. So, we started benchmarking what the people have. Facility re-quantified in terms of building square foot per capita. So, you can see the numbers are pretty small, like point one or things like that, there's buildings worth it per capita, or that's how we looked at it. And we look at the Louisville population as that cog number of a hundred and eleven thousand people. Uh, this shows, uh, this shows where Louisville is right now in terms of recreation. The red line is the average. So, you can see, uh, it's very quickly graphically wise, uh, Louisville, I forget the exact number, I think it's eighty-five, seven. The average is about one, uh, for what's going on within this market area. So, you can see, uh, you're about probably forty percent lower than probably communities are around you in terms of recreation center capacity, this capacity. That's a kind of quick snapshot. Senior centers, uh, you know, on the surface, it looks like you have a, a great facility and you do, uh, but in terms of, in terms of where we are average-wise to other cities, now granted, we can throw, we can throw some of these out, they're, they're pretty high, but still overall you see there's a lot of dots above Louisville right now in terms of capacity. And that stands to reason your hundred and eleven thou, what we, hundred and eleven thousand people. Does that kind of give you a snapshot of, of where we're at? So, uh, with that information, that information, go ahead.
Can you go back one? The blue dots are their current population or are they their projected cog population?
No, that's, that's, that's the centers they're providing right now based on their current population.
On their current, so that green, so this is actually two data points. One is their current with their current square footage. The green is our current square footage with our projected population.
Oh, yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
Yeah. And some of these, some of these cities are kind of, some of these cities are, are flat planos, it's just about built out. So, there are some cities that are kind of on that, on that end. And there are some cities that actually, uh, what's, what's going on is they're actually, they're actually building facilities to respond. Can I jump in real quick? I think I might misunderstand each other. The green is Louisville's current, uh, square footage with current population.
Green is with current, okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry. He's correct. This is just an explanation. I was looking at this down here when, when you asked that question. That's what it does. Yeah.
Wait, all right, I'm not, yeah, I'm not clear on that.
The green is, is, is your current population.
And our current square footage.
Your square footage.
The blue dots are their current square footage and their current population.
That's correct.
Why do I have a hundred and eleven thousand, one hundred and sixty-eight on this slide or these slides?
This, right here, you mean?
Yeah.
It's because if you're building something, let's say you're, you're building something, you know, it takes probably at least three years to build something, you're, you're starting to edge up toward your, your, your population. Uh, your current population is what, ninety?
It's easy to, easy to for a target.
Yeah.
Assuming your future population, what would you have to have in terms of square footage to meet the average that's shown there on the red line?
So, but, but this chart doesn't show me that. This chart just says what I have today and it says, oh, by the way, you're going to grow.
It calculates an average for the other cities and then it applies that average to your future population.
Right.
That is what you're doing, right?
That is correct.
It's basically saying, based on today's average, if you had tomorrow's total population, this is how much space is needed.
We derived, this is the average right now, the cities are doing with their current population.
Okay.
They're point two seven.
Right.
We multiply times two point seven about where your population will be. And just give, I'm not saying that you had to build thirty thousand, but I'm saying...
Okay, so the only data point, the only data point that that is relevant to is nothing in the chart, it's relevant to, we, we've got a projected thirty thousand square foot deficit.
No, you're not, you're not thirty thousand deficit, that's what you would have if you were, if you were to kind of, to this average.
Which is today's number.
To build that population. Okay.
What, what, what kind of a bone in the...
That's fine if they're talking.
You get what I'm getting at.
So, with that in mind, and it's like your current, how do we, how do we use what you currently have to, to get to that point? Well, we're, one of the options, this is one option, and that's why this is kind of talking point. One option is, uh, you know, Fred Herring here is, we come in and renovate that interior space like we talked about, make it a little more, uh, program responsive to today's needs. So, that would keep us thirty thousand square feet in this column. The senior activity center, one of the things we could do is actually convert the recreations, combine the recreation and senior center by connector with, to have classrooms off of it. So, you're u, you're fully utilizing those two buildings to get to your, to get to your kind of target zone of, of senior. And they have the same activities that you kind of need. You've got the big gym that could be converted to purpose, you got the, you got the cardio center that could be converted, the classroom. So, it's kind of a normal transition, you use a lot of time to see those in centers of what you've got there now. And then, over here in terms of reaching your capacity, create a new, uh, uh, center with an indoor aquatic, since indoor aquatic was your highest level of, highest level of need. Yes, sir?
Good question. If I'm combining these two centers and I'm adding four thousand square feet connector, where did I lose ten thousand square feet? Is it because you're showing the two added together in that column, is that...
The two, the two added together is twenty-eight thousand, then four thousand, that equals thirty-two.
Okay, so on the left-hand side I have a, okay.
Yeah. So, anyway, it's, it's something, something for thought since this facility is like, uh, we're saying for full utilization of that, that center would need to grow quite a bit, I think, to serve these for a full recreation center. And the, the senior center needs to grow. So, one option is just let's, let's use the amenities that we have there, just build a connector and do some minor modifications to the inside of that if we have a new enlarged senior center with the same location. So, that was kind of the thought process. So, big picture, expand the senior center, modify some rooms in the Herring Center, modify shoes, uh, build a, a new recreation aquatic center, explore opportunities in the indoor pool. Explore opportunities in the indoor pool with perhaps some partners, you know, YMCA, school district, maybe the hospital might be a potential partner in some of that. This gives you an outline of what would be kind of, what I see as kind of a chassis for a, for a recreation center. Basically, your basic lobby, administrative area, fairly small, but your fitness area would probably be about seven thousand feet. I'm just giving you a sense of what this would include in that kind of square footage. Would be in that area, the gymnasium, it's a double gym, it's not two gyms, it's a double gym, could be divided into purpose. So it's a little bit larger than a standard gym, but it allows you that. And when you do that, it allows you to have a walking, elevated walking track. And it's interesting that in the survey, I didn't, we didn't mine this out there, but elevated walking tracks are typically one of the higher rated things we see in communities. Because it addresses everybody, it addresses the hot summertime. We haven't had the cold winter like we had last year, but the people's activity of walking is supported by that and most centers today have that. The aerobics rooms, which is a room almost, almost like this, except this is a cushioned floor. Aerobics rooms and all the programming, this is where your martial arts, your Pilates, your yoga, your spinning. All those activities occur within those multi-program kind of zones. Classrooms, childcare area, a kind of a drop-in zone for parents or grandparents that were coming to work out for an hour and a half and they could pay a small charge for that child to be blocked. But it's not going to be a childcare area, but it's really a basic dating zone. Shared, shared areas, you typically have multipurpose room in that, gives you some capacity there that you can be programmed out. Indoor play area, same one, more of them done within centers where it's almost like a, I hate to go back through the brush aside, but Macdonald or something. A scaled-down version of that play element that's inside. A lot of people like to do that inside instead of going outside when it's hundred degrees, take the kid there and play. Toilets, family changing areas are huge, especially when you've got aquatics. The aquatic area would be a leisure fitness pool. Then you have your circulation and all this stuff. It comes out to about seventy-six thousand square feet with what a, what you would see is a chassis of a, I call it a chassis. A chassis of a, of a recreation center today that you're seeing built across the metroplex and, and. One that actually, when you build this, when you build this, and this is a big question for y'all, I'm not proposing that you do this, particularly when, when you build this, we're seeing people charge more competitive rates of what cost of operation really is.
Compared to?
What's that?
Compared to who?
Well, you don't have to be compared with the private, you actually typically are less in the private sector. Just depends on how much you want to, how much you want to supplement the cost of operation. I'll give you an example, City of Keller, we have studied for them, said you need to charge this much money. You have this many people, I think that membership of, or attendance like two hundred and sixty-five thousand a year. To, it's about, just, just about this center right here in terms of components. They, their council elected that they wanted this to be self-sustaining. So in other words, they had to, they had to, they had to charge the rate to have a hundred percent recapture rate on, on their fees and programming costs they would have to, to sustain it, to sustain that.
So not only infrastructure itself, but the operating unit?
Well, they didn't, they didn't pay for the capital cost, they just paid for the operations cost. Operations, operations meaning staff, meaning, meaning supplies, electricity, all of that.
Okay.
Frisco is taking that same approach. In fact, Frisco's rate is, is pretty high. Plano, because I had that, former Branson had that. Plano has doubled their, has doubled their cost that they had when they started the facility.
Collinian facility right there, do they have a water facility in there?
That is a, like Alama Beach or whatever that is.
Yeah.
That, that's a private enterprise, yeah.
For the ones that are doing that.
It's been a wrap for the pool. I'll shake up my kids. Yeah, that's, that's old.
Oh, the Collinian?
Yeah.
Yeah, that I'm sure doesn't pay for itself, what's in charge for that.
The cities that have elected to increase, like you talked about, to try to help supplement, have they been able to any drop off in this place or anything?
No. In fact, there's a lot of surveys that are done and typically what's happening is you ask that question. You'll always, I mean, y'all are in the public service, you know that whatever you do, there are a few people that don't like what you did. But by and large, surveys and even part of the surveys, you know, if we built a facility with the right amenities, would you be willing to pay, let the user pay for it pretty much in terms of the operations? And, and I mean, I could give you an example, I mean, when Plano built their new center, we did it, so I know the numbers. They exceeded what they estimated they were going to get the first three months of operation, while this is happening. Keller, same way, Frisco, same way. So, but in what they do, and what you also do is build some of that into your budget for scholarships. So you have people that perhaps can't participate without that scholarship, so you, so you scholarship it. And I'm not arguing for you to do this, I'm just, I'm answering this question. But, but that is, that is a trend, I'd say a trend in the industry nationwide as well as here, is for the user to play a bigger part of that cost of operation than just kind of give it away. So we established some budgets for you, we said to do this, and when we, when we do a budget, all the budget includes, includes the construction, furniture fixtures, equipment, what's F F and E. The fees to do it, contingencies that you probably need, so that's, that's kind of move in. There's, there's no other cost, that's, that's the total cost. So construction is not that nice, it's the total project cost. And that's what you should budget if you do something. So we, we developed these numbers, and these numbers are somewhat global in a sense of square foot. And based on where the site is, or, or the level of finish out, you know, those numbers will vary just a little bit. But it's a good tool for y'all to be considering as you go forward relative to what you might want to do. I do have a, I don't know if our time really allows us to do that, but I, I do have kind of some slides on about eight or nine facilities in this area. Just kind of a quick run-through, I call that kind of a birdwatcher. If you're not familiar with it, if you're not familiar with what's being done around you, I'd be happy to do it or we can just.
Now, if we can kind of go through it quickly, just kind of give a quick.
While he's pulling that up, did you all look at specific locations? Eastside have a broad descriptor for location, and I think that there had been some refinement of that.
Since, since we've been involved, I would probably ask either master or Bob to kind of share.
Make it about the.
We targeted, we targeted one area in a, that was potential, there was a land area was large enough and it had something to. You'd love trails to come in, you'd love for this to be a part of kind of a larger system, if you will. Because then you have all these things that play out together.
Without getting too specific, obviously, but just kind of address the general location. We're not talking about way up by Castle Hills, correct?
The, the one area that was talked about where we have existing land based on some old master plan was possibility, how to distill part of it. But, but we've also talked about that might be too far, do we need to look more centrally located, kind of central Louisville, some area? We didn't really identify any particular areas.
I'm going to take you through this just real quickly. City of Allen has, has two centers. This is one center that's most recent, most recent, and they actually partnered with the school district. And it has indoor competitive waters, indoor leisure water. It has the aerobics kind of activity and it has the exercises on itself. It's right adjacent to the high school and the new huge stadium they're building over there. This actually, we did a business plan on this, and this actually has been able to sustain about any day, two percent recapture rate year after year. And this facility is probably over ten years old. Capel, one of your neighbors as well, Capel has a center, has a YMCA just down the street, both do very well. Capel, it has the workout area, has elevated track, gymnasium, has, has a dedicated aerobics area, childcare. That's being expanded right now. This is what they're doing to expand it, they're expanding to the front of the existing center, creating a new lobby. And this is kind of the floor plan. What they're doing is they found that their cardio area, and I do seminars on this topic, and I always say you can't move your cardio weight area big enough. Because we're getting new equipment, different kinds of equipment, more specifically targeted to different muscle areas and things like that. So that's basically what they did, they more than doubled the cardio area with the expansion that they're doing now. And this is going to be open, and in fact, cardio is open, the renovated area is going to be open another month or so. Grapevine, Grapevine is an older facility, has two gymnasiums, gymnasium on either side, kind of the entry piece. Program areas actually are real, real good in Grapevine, and they're actually looking to redo what they're doing. What they're looking to add is the indoor pool, not like y'all have the real high deep indoor pool. And they're also moving their senior center as a component of that. They're moving their senior center as, as a piece of that, they're, they're studying it right now. It still has a, has the DIS and the racquetball courts. Racquetball courts are really specialized zone and a lot of you guys might be racquetball players or women, but it, unfortunately is kind of winding down because you have eight hundred square feet for two people, four people that can play doubles. That's a lot of square footage that you could be using and that's, that capacity issue that you're looking at, that cities are becoming more and more aware of. What we do, we need to entertain as many people within the city with that square footage. Keller, this is the one I said that's a hundred percent recapture rate. Keller has indoor and outdoor water, so this is, has indoor and then outdoor water out here. A large gymnasium, a large cardio, about seven thousand per per cardio. Meeting area that could be used in the evening, could be blocked off, kind of what I was talking about for your set, your other meeting room. Has childcare, has the elevated track going above it, this overlook. It's in a, in a major park, Long Bear Creek Park. Here are some of the images that you're, that you're getting, this is the meeting room, other things, free set, financial worries. But the track is a, track typically is one of those things that walks around and sees everything. You know, here, here is overlooking the pool, overlooks the gymnasium, just a kind of a thread that, because what you want to do, you want to see a lot of activity. You don't want a lot of things behind closed doors, you want to see what's going on and just for security as well, just that sense of, it's really becomes a social area within the community that's done right. Becomes a real social area. McKinney, McKinney has some dated facilities. They are in a major push right now to do a new, new facility in McKinney. They have, this is basically almost basketball and a meeting room space, two basketball courts. And this is their second center that has weight and basketball. And they have a large meeting area that they ran out. It's a beautiful park setting that this facility is in, that they're in an expansion of right now, probably the next two, three months after they start that planning. Plano, this is the latest Plano facility that they did. This is Tom Muleback Center, that basically has the double gymnasium, that's what I was talking about, meeting room space. Pool area, the, the school district is partnering in that, the school district actually uses this, the city uses it to, to, for their, for their indoor activities. It has an outdoor seasonal pool. But you can see, this guy, this guy, the indoor, the track goes around this, goes out to the lobby. The North Erickson Hills, this, this, I'm showing you this because it actually has a senior element as well. You see the senior element here as the, as the classroom, it has the kind of what I call the living room, kind of lounge, where people can go. It has a large meeting room that's subdivided, but then it has access to this other large meeting room. It'd be like a senior, senior building attached to this building. They don't have it all the time, but when they got the dances and all that stuff, they have that larger area that they can use. So this is a banquet area of the center, and then this is all recreation, aquatics, cardio, gymnasium, and then upstairs is your aerobics room. And your long, long track, and they actually have kind of a terrace area upstairs. Just kind of give you some of the elements of that. This is opening in about two months. But we're starting to see some of those little senior pieces crop into the program that cities are doing in terms of how they're going about things. Richardson, Richardson taking different approach, all their things with kind of neighborhood we're in. So what Richardson is doing has a program of building about four twenty-five thousand purpose centers around the town. This is the first one, it's hub eyes, a replacement facility, has a gymnasium, multipurpose zone, cardio area, and a game room, is pretty much what they have. This is a new facility that they're planning on Arapahoe, it's a replacement for their own existing center. Again, center is probably four years old or so, you know, they're just having to replace it. So we need to, we need to make better use of what we have. So they're building a new center, about twenty-five thousand square feet, they're building an outdoor aquatic element as part of that, any existing park, ice park.
I think that gives us a pretty good idea of some of the ones that are around. I would say that, you can see, this is a very large undertaking here if you decide to go this direction.
Yes.
If we do, I would recommend that we plan a, a council trip. Similar to what we did when we built city hall and stuff, that we actually go and visit some of these facilities and see firsthand exactly what they're going to. Get some personal insight, direction, what we would like to see, what we wouldn't like, what we prefer to focus on, what we prefer to focus on and kind of go in that direction.
I will add, there is one thing that you can't take another approach that is somewhat unconventional, but more and more people are doing it, is actually looking at what's going to cost you to operate it. What's your potential income in, in doing a business, kind of doing a business plan as part of that. And you know, going into it, you know, you're agreeing to support it X number of dollars, or not at all, or more than that.
Right.
And so that's a, so anyway, that's, that's really the end of my discussion, the, your first question is. Thanks.
Well, thank you, Dwayne. You know, we should mention and actually commend this city for this facility that we are in. It's truly a beautiful city, and I think it's a good example of a partnership, in this case with a hospital, but also about just the quality of it. And this is state of the art, and I really think you set yourself apart within the North Texas area by something like this. And make that your goal, make that your vision. I can really.